I see a lot of...
Thank you.
The greatest.
Yeah, we're gonna get, gotta get to it.
Absolutely matter, yes.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
I'm good.
Good morning. Thank you, sir.
How are you going by today, Chairman?
Tom, Tom.
All right, well. That's the one, please rise and put your... Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion approved in the last meeting.
I'll second it.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to approve the last meeting. Questions or comments?
Comment?
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment to the public comment for the last meeting. The public comment insists of, uh, motion by Commissioner Jean Greco to close the meeting and to second, that's not public comment. There was plenty of public comment, but none of it is listed. And I believe that's a violation of sunshine law. Say it again and again until you have made it. Is that all I have to say?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to add fire. Approve the following disbursements listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve the cash disbursements and electronic fund transfers. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number six is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren to, following seminar requests and payments for seminar requests as stated. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number seven is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve the five days a week meals on wheels deliveries in Susquehanna County continued at cost twenty-five thousand. Questions or comments?
Could I?
Yes.
Could I comment? That would be up to twenty-five, it will be no more, is that correct?
That's correct. Right, the estimated cost is twenty-eight thousand, but they capped it at twenty-five. Yes.
Uh, that's to keep it at five days?
Yes.
And it's five days right now?
It's five days right now, but in, uh, the four counties, two counties have already cut back to, uh, less than five days because of the loss of funding to the area on agency of aging.
Now, do you know if Bradford County has cut back to three days?
Yes, they have.
And I'm surprised they've cut down to three days since they're a booming county with gas drilling, with all the money they have. Why would they cut back?
You would have to ask Bradford County. I don't know why Bradford County does what they do.
You don't know? Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, carry.
Motion to approve item number eight is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren to, uh, add and find accept the election system and software LLC, um, at a cost of, uh, um, twenty thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve item number nine is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Jean Greco, to acknowledge the hiring of Samantha Robinson of Matos by the President Judge John King Seaman. Yes, one question.
My question is, why are we still hiring people at six and a half hours per day? I understand that they're currently at seven and a half hours, but why do we still, haven't we, haven't we made comments about that and getting people's hours up to forty hours a week and?
Well, they're all under union contract. This is part-time position until their six-month probation, so it's new hire. It's up to the judge.
Okay, it's not part-time, that was...
Well, it's not permanent during the six-month probation period. Then the union contract will take over.
Okay, and then the judge sets the hours as determined by, doesn't the salary board set the hours?
Yes, it's evolved by contract.
Is that true?
The contracts don't actually specify how many hours a day they're at work, but this position has always been six and a half hours, and the commissioners have approved the judge's request to keep it at seven and a half until, I believe it's March of next year, and then if you want to try, then we can move it if you so choose.
I understand, but when did we take the opportunity to make the hours consistent or get them up higher?
Sounds like we did, it's just taking time, is that right, Sylvia? Is that we just?
Like, do you mean up to forty hours to make more jobs at forty hours?
Well, no, I think the point, I think the point, and you're correct me from wrong, I think the point here is, is that when we continue to hire people who work at six and a half hours instead of working eight hours a day, when you hire ten people to work six and a half hours instead, instead of seven people work ten, ten, eight hours a day, uh, there's a cost factor there. Uh, you know, when you work people eight hours a day, you need less people than if you work them six and a half hours a day. Uh, if we're doing manpower schedules and our manpower costs for so many hours, if we're working a full eight-hour day, we need less people than if you work them six hours a day. And the cost to the county, the future cost to the county is the big issue here. Uh, the issue of the benefits, of course, with the insurance, but also with pension fund, the defined program like we have, uh, it's huge cost. That program adds about a million dollars of liability each year to, to the cost to the county. And so I understand that, and that's something that we have to take and get a control over, is that people need to, before we hire more people, everybody has to work a maximum number of hours. But as Michael said, this is controlled by the judge, so, uh, we'll have to have a conversation with him. Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve item number ten is listed on the agenda.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Jean Greco, seconded by Commissioner Warren, to accept a proposal for MCM Consulting Group Incorporated, which is a hundred percent reimbursed from FEMA and PMA. Questions or comments? Yes.
Do you have any other details, what that involves? Besides what's written here?
As far as the plan itself, well, once, uh, Paul gets the plan together, then we can have it available done.
So you don't have any other details?
Right now, if it's second, no. Yes.
Could you or someone on the, on the board explain what an unconventional well site is?
Yeah. You want to have a moment?
Most of the unconventional wells are not the horizontal, they're vertical, not hydraulically fracked with, uh, no laterals going. They're defined different ways by different companies. The conventional wells are, or some people have defined unconventional wells is the horizontal drilling lines, that they are unconventional because that's a whole new procedure, so.
So, in this county, which one is which? Which one's conventional? And which one is unconventional?
No, the unconventional ones are the ones, I view the unconventional wells as the ones that are hydraulically flapped with long lateral legs, because it's been a new process as opposed to the vertical ones that are going right straight down, that do not have, uh, any bends or horizontal laterals to them. So, most of them are all unconventional wells.
Here's clarification by the President of the United States, Executive Order Supporting Safe and Responsible Development of Unconventional Domestic Natural Gas Resources. That is from the President's desk. That says, all of it's unconventional. This, the drilling that they're doing is unconventional. Used to be straight-down holes, even fracked it, but the gas came straight up just like oil does. Now they go a mile and a half sideways with multiple strings. That's all, if they go sideways, then it's considered unconventional, but that's...
I think that's what Michael just said.
Yep, I, I'm just reaffirming what he just said.
Any other questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I'll make a motion to approve item number eleven is listed on your agenda.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, seconded by Commissioner Jean Greco, to approve the tax claim bureau collecting, examining tax claim bureau from collecting income taxes on listed property. Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All in common.
I have a question.
Yes.
Question is, um, all these agenda items, um, when are they discussed? Are they discussed prior to meeting?
They're not discussed.
Or is this the first time that you've seen these things?
We've all seen them individually, but we've not discussed them. Any other questions? Comments?
I, I have, I have one. Toby?
Yes.
I've had several people contact me about some letter that went out from the, from the library, and I've seen one of them, I've heard different comments about it. The, the issue has been with the comments, uh, you're cutting hours, cutting services, and the public money's going into there, so there's been some issue about what the library is doing with cutting hours or not making services available to the public, but yet there's public money going into that. You wanna?
I can respond to that if you'd like me to.
I'd like to too, yes. I, I would like to, I'd like to know.
I'm talking about the Historical Society here, which is the second floor of the building in the main, the main library across the way there. Uh, the Historical Society is mainly a museum. That's its primary function. Secondarily, it has for many, many years, uh, kept records of genealogy. That is, who's buried where, who married whom, and things like that. This, uh, is mostly kept in microfilm, and, uh, it's a very precious collection of information. Until recently, it was our rule that anyone could go up there to research where their grandparents are buried or something like that, maybe pay five dollars a day, or pay twenty dollars and have access to those records for a year.
Okay.
And that worked fine for many years.
So what's the problem now? Why?
Problem now is that when the gas researching became a big issue in this county, we were deluged with, uh, title searchers working for the gas companies, coming up there and spending huge amounts of time and, uh, and resources of our staff. We have one full-time and two part-time employees. These are to run the museum as well as the genealogy research. And you have to understand that if somebody goes up there to do this research, it's not like pulling a book off a shelf, reading a book and putting it back on the shelf. Somebody has to assist you in finding the right roll of microfilm, how to put it into the microfilm reader, which is old and doesn't work very well, how to make prints from it, and, uh, then, as a crucial part of this, is to get the microfilm back in the right place, because if it's in the wrong place, it's lost. Uh, these people have been, uh, just eating up the time of our staff up there to the point where they can't even attend to the duties of the curator of the museum. The board, and, and also somebody going in there to research where their grandparents are buried, can't get in easily because the staff has been used up servicing the gas researchers.
So is there, is there a resolution to this? Have you cut hours?
Resolution that we did, we, we tried to make a distinction, we did make a distinction between commercial researchers and private individuals. And we said that we would serve the commercial researchers on two afternoons a week. There was initially some objection to that, mostly as I understand, because we picked the wrong two afternoons, and at their request, we changed that to two different afternoons. And as I understand, they're satisfied with that, and they thank us for doing that. We don't have the resources to add staff up there. At the beginning of this year, we actually passed the hat around the board to enable one of our part-timers to go more hours up there to serve these people. And I just felt that, uh, our board should not be personally supporting the gas industry in this county.
Okay, have you attended this discussion with the gas industry?
We had a meeting.
If that's primarily where the deluge is coming from?
And have they offered any assistance to help you expand to meet their needs as opposed to apparently the general public's needs? Of course, I don't know how you make a distinction between the two. That's a difficult distinction to make, of course.
I don't know how you do that.
Well, and we don't know either. Uh, we had a meeting on the eighth, which is two weeks ago today, at which, uh, most of the researchers were invited. Three showed up. We talked with them for an hour and a half, and they went away saying that they would talk to their companies and get back to us. We've not heard from them since.
So you're working on it? You are aware that there's an issue?
We certainly are aware there's an issue, and Michael, it's a money issue.
Yeah.
If we had the money to add two or three more per full-time staff up there, it would be wonderful. We just cannot do that. Unless we're gonna close the library another day, then we, we already closed it one day.
Okay.
Is there any more questions? Try to answer. Yes.
I'd like to know, has the gas company offered any money to help with the part-time additional work, worker?
No, they, that's one of the things they're considering. Another thing they're considering is that since our microphone readers are, uh, say on the point of collapse, we're told that no more parts will be available after December of this year, to buy new computerized, uh, equipment up there, which would cost roughly fifteen thousand dollars per piece, and, uh, they said they will consider helping with that expense also. We've not heard from them since then.
Hi, Toby. I just, Toby, did you, did we also talk about the fee structure that, uh, that the Historical Society charges to members?
Yes.
And talk about how if we charge the research companies a commercial fee structure, that money could then be passed on to?
That is correct.
Oil and gas companies?
And that is one way we could deal with this, would be to distinguish between who are the commercial people and who are the private individuals just going up to look up their grandparents. That would be one way of dealing with this, then we would have to distinguish between who's commercial and who's not.
Right.
And take their word for it. We may have to go to a program like that.
And, and the point being, not all the gas companies are using the resources in equal measure, but?
Absolutely true.
If you charge the research companies, then they could charge the companies they're working for.
They would pass it up along, absolutely. And that would be one way to do this, and it would be difficult to try to arrange a schedule like that, but that's what we may come up to. Thank you for bringing that up.
Any other public comment?
Motion to adjourn?
No, no, I have a comment.
Go ahead.
I'd like to say that last night, there was a gas site fire at the Phelps site in Lathrop Township, uh, in Hop Bottom, and wondering if, if you have any details about it, and how did our response, our emergency response team, uh, do on that issue?
No, I'm sure they handled it professionally like they always do.
Do you, do you know anything about it? Have you heard about it?
Yeah, um, I've been bringing up the last two meetings I was here about what's going on down in Franklin Forks with the Heavenly Angels Restaurant. Nobody seemed interested. This is from this morning, Todd Oster. He is the head of Clean, Safe Drinking Water Division of DEP. Finally, they received my voicemail, but let me get to the good part here. When, the department is not ignoring the situation. When the elevated arsenic levels were confirmed, we've never been told, I live two miles from this place, not once in six months I've been asking if I've been told there was elevated arsenic levels. They have a vent pipe. I asked a question, why do they have a sign out in front of that restaurant that says, "Our water is, our water quality is fine, no trespassing"? They, there's no answer to that either. A restaurant in town can't put, "Our water quality is fine" if there's elevated arsenic levels in it. Nobody, everybody's ignoring this. This is a public health safety issue. This has nothing to do with whether you're for or against gas drilling. I don't care what's in the water. If a restaurant is open to serve to the public, and it has arsenic or any other thing in the water that might be dangerous to human health, it can't be open. You lock the doors, that's what you do, until they can mitigate it. You, you can't have peo- people out here not knowing what's going on in the restaurants. They might have an A rating in their window from cleanliness, but their water quality's not checked. When I first was asking, when they got all nervous about me asking, they checked three things: nitrates, nitrites, and bacteria. That's it. Same thing with farms. They don't check for any natural gas drilling constituents or any constituents of any other kind, 'cause the test is too expensive. My question was, you've got, that restaurant has a water buffalo on a family's property right next door, right across the street, and a hundred yards down the street. Finally, they put a vent pipe on there, because after I asked about the methane levels, they put a vent pipe on it. I mean, why does it take me, just a guy that lives down the street, asking these questions? Shouldn't somebody else be asking these questions that might be in charge of things? I understand you guys don't have the power to do anything. Well, I'm wondering why, why did Tina Pickett and Jean Yaw have the power to write a letter to the DEP for Ann Van Litten and the Enough Already Endemic Proud Group to get the moratorium lifted on the ban over at Nine Square Mile? By the way, it did get lifted yesterday. They got involved. Now, every time I called them, you know how many times they've visited the Nine Square Mile area, and the people that have the contamination down there, or supposedly do? Zero. Not once has Jean Yaw or Tina Pickett visited their own constituents that voted for them, most of them. So my concern is, they got involved, they did something very simple. They wrote a letter to the DEP and said, "Hey, my constituents want to know why there's still a moratorium in their area so they can't get gas drilling done and make, and, and get dollars from it." You know what? I called Jean Yaw and thanked him for representing his clients, or, I mean, his constituents. That was very nice of he and Tina to do. But I also admonished them very strongly for not taking the time to go get the other side. I only asked them one question, why is there a moratorium in the first place? They couldn't answer the question. "Oh, well, I guess, uh, you guess, it's been in place for two and a half years." You're writing a letter to get it lifted, you don't even know what it is, neither Nick Troutman, who is Jean Yaw's right-hand man, nor Tina Pickett herself, who spent forty-five minutes on the phone with me, trying to extricate herself from the situation. Now, let me tell you what my plan of action is, just so you know, and it includes you three up here. I'm sending emails to you on a regular basis, as I do every elected official, about all these problems that they're ignoring. I'm saying ignoring. You know why? Mike knows, 'cause he's an attorney. Because when it goes bad, when stuff blows up and we can't extricate ourselves, every elected official's gonna go, "Oh, we didn't know, we had no idea." And I'm gonna stand right next to whoever decides to do that, and I'm gonna have a stack of emails that I sent to those, that same person, and say, "I don't understand," 'cause for the last two and a half years, I've been sending you queries about this. So my concern is, either get involved or get out of the position. That's what I'm gonna say to any elected official, not only Susquehanna County, but in the state of Pennsylvania. Look at both sides. Your job is to sit in the middle and review both sides, and come to a conclusion that best protects the citizens of Susquehanna County and the state of Pennsylvania. My dad would have been, roll, is rolling over in his grave, sixty-three years of emergency management. In emergency management, you do what? You look at what potential problems can happen, and you solve them before they come. Instead, we're waiting for the big bomb to go off, and when it does, it's gonna be bad, guys, I'm telling you right now. Now we have it on video record, two of me saying this, "I don't understand." I understand you don't have certain powers. You do have one power, represent the people who put you in office, even the ones that didn't vote for you, you still represent them. I got letters from the President of the United States about this stuff. I can't get anybody here in the county to take it seriously. I'm hoping Mr. Stoud, who is a former law enforcement agent who just took over for EMA, I'm hoping he gets involved to at least find out what's going on. Since it's only six miles down the street, what I'm talking about, elevated arsenic levels at a restaurant, you or your family or people you know may have eaten at, that had no idea. But it's by law, they have to give us the tests. We went in and asked, Veer went in and asked, Tammy Manning went and asked, they would not give us their water test results. They have to by law. And what genius opened a brewery right down next door to that? Endless Mountain Brewery is right next door at the bottom of the hill in Franklin Forks. DEP today is testing down there this morning, and Susan Oliver was taking readings from the creek right next to where the Endless Mountain Brewery gets their water to make beer. You want some beer? I'll buy you some. Uh, we ought to put some skull and crossbones on the side of it, because we don't know what the hell is in it, and nobody will test their water and come out publicly. I'm getting sick of this. We can't hide our head in the sands. We don't have to be alarmists. I'm not an anti-drilling activist. I live here. So do you guys. You represent all of us. You can't extricate yourself from the situation. Jean Yaw and Tina Pickett insulted their constituents and should resign by not having any interest in researching why there was a nine-square-mile radius moratorium, but in taking the time to send a letter on their letterhead to the DEP to get it lifted. That is ridiculous. So I'm gonna say it once again, we need help. Right down the street, I'm not talking about in Hop Bottom where they just, something blew up, or Lathrop compressor station that blew up a few months ago, not talking about that, right here in River City down the street. And to top it off, would you like to know that Great Bend Borough Councilor Brett Jennings just contacted me yesterday and said, "All their water went black on multiple homes along the Susquehanna River in Great Bend, just exactly like what happened on December sixth in Franklin Forks." Guess what they also found? He's smart enough, water quality expert, went across the river to the New York side, black water and people's, uh, clogging up their systems all along the other side. That is crossing state lines with this potential contamination. I don't care who caused it. I don't care if, uh, if elves, if Keebler elves down below the ground did it, doesn't matter to me. What is causing it, we ought to get to the bottom of it, should concern everyone here, 'cause you know what's gonna happen? As soon as the Great Bend people come forward, like Matt and Tammy Manning did, and Bill Pats and his wife who are moving? They're moving, they've been in this community for over twenty years. He knows everybody, they're getting the hell out of here. You know why? 'Cause nobody listens to anybody anymore. So we appreciate your interest in listening to this, but you can't ignore it, because I'm gonna keep sending the emails, and as soon as somebody claims they didn't know, I'm gonna be standing right up next to you, or anybody that claims to do that, and I'm gonna hand those copies to the media. And they're gonna wonder why the, why the dichotomy there. Why you say you didn't know, and I have letter, uh, emails and letters sent to you directly showing you the problems. So ignore it at your own risk, 'cause I'm gonna find somebody who's interested in getting to the bottom of this, and when I do, I'm expecting everybody that ignored this to resign their position, because I'm not interested anymore, and I don't know what's going on, and I don't have any power. You can put a burn ban in and find me two-hundred-and-fifty dollars for lighting a fire in my backyard. Right? That's correct, yes. Why in the hell can't we at least look into somebody potentially damaging the water of an entire community? So I appreciate your time. As you can see, I'm animated, 'cause I got this this morning, six months it took me to have them recognize they have arsenic in the water. And if you wanna get involved, go right down there and find out why the DEP is down, uh, doing water testing, right in Franklin Forks as we drove by this morning to get here. Something's going on, and unless you're aware of it, then you're, you're ignoring the whole situation. I appreciate, uh, the time, and I hope that you'll, um, heed the warning. Thank you.
Any other public comment? Yes.
Uh, I have a question, and I guess it's along those lines, as to why nobody speaks up or says anything, and I've asked this at the township meeting too, in the township, but I understand that in Act thirteen, there's, I don't know what the exact language is, but it prohibits you from doing anything that might, um, put roadblocks in the way of the gas industry, or you won't get your impact fee, or you run the risk of not getting your impact fee. Is that true? You can't do anything that might hold them up?
Well, they're governed by state agencies and federal agencies, that's the first problem.
Right, and in Act thirteen, in order to get your impact fee, you gotta, you know, play their game and not speak up and not put in any, not the association.
I don't think Act thirteen says that. Act thirteen doesn't say we can't speak up and we can't do things.
Okay, then why don't, doesn't anybody speak up? And why doesn't anybody ask questions?
Well, people aren't. You know, everybody who comes here assumes that none of us do anything, and that's fine. But we do have conversations with state agencies, we do have conversations with federal agencies and other people, so, I mean, everybody can keep saying we don't do anything, that's fine. You know, that's your, no, wait a minute, you let me finish now. You can have your version as to what's going on, and, and our version is entirely different. There's things that we've done behind the scenes that, that we've said time and time again. We've had conversations with senators, House of Representatives, uh, we've had conversations with DEP, we've had conversations with lots of people. So, you know, it's not that we're not doing anything. We are doing what we feel is the best avenue for us to approach right now. And you can disagree or agree as to whether you agree that what we're doing is right or wrong. That's your opinion, but that's the answer.
Well, then I have, I have another comment, okay? Because I don't know if you're aware of this or not, but you know, there's a lot of funding being proposed by the EPA, the federal EPA, to create better mechanisms for capping emissions on compressor stations, okay, for preventing air emissions in compressor stations. But next, side by side with that, they're also proposing something that says the oil and gas industry can be exempt from whatever standards they come up with in Class 1 areas, just like the pipeline people, because they feel there's no significant human population. I didn't move here giving up my right to be part of the human population. You know what I mean? And the fact that they are considering this exemption now, I am hoping that our community leaders will write letters, will do something because the EPA is responsive to public pressure. It's not just who's paying them, like the gas and oil industry. But if they come out and they make a decision to say that our communities are exempt from those new standards, that they will put in more populated areas, we're screwed, quite frankly. So if you guys can write your letters and promote to the EPA and let them know that there are people of value living here, it's not an area of no significant human population.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to direct this question to Mike. I'd like to know, are you feeling frustrated, uncomfortable with public comments? Because I, you know, I see you sighing, turning away.
Yeah, because you have your version about what you think we're not doing, and it's completely contrary to what we're really doing. Public comment's very valuable if you offer something meaningful and worthwhile that we can deal with. The least of what to say, as Alan pointed out to you, is we're doing what we can do that we feel is in the best interest of our people. And obviously, none of you want to agree with that, and that's your prerogative.
Well, could you give us like a detail of what you've done so that you could show us what you have done?
I just answered your question.
The past month or so.
Excuse me. Anna, go ahead. You have the floor.
Thank you. I'm on the floor. If, in fact, the commissioners are working and talking to the gas people and talking to the state representatives, et cetera, wouldn't it behoove you, because you've been asked all these questions and you feel that you've been alone, wouldn't it behoove you at every meeting to give the community a report on what has been discussed with these people so we don't have to worry about arsenic levels in the water, so we know that the commissioners are on board? It would be very helpful if added to an agenda item. All we need to do is hear a report on who you spoke with and what you spoke about and what they said. Because we are only available to the sites we see and we drive by that we stop at. If you've been involved, then it's your business, it's your prerogative, it's your duty to inform these people. We didn't elect you to sit silent. We didn't elect you so that we can sit in a group and say, "They're not doing their job. Tell us what you're doing. Put it on the agenda and tell us." It would be very helpful. It would, it would ameliorate a lot of ill will, and it would prove that you are aware of what is going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, it's closed.
It's closed?
I ask if there is any more. Do you have a public?
Yes, I have a public comment. I have a question. You stated that you have been in contact with the state senators and the DEP and the EPA. Can you give an example, can you give three examples of conversations you've had regarding what Mr. Stevens has spoken about in the past two months, what Vera has spoken about in the past two months, about the issues, about what's going on, what he perceives as problems? Can you give an example of when you have spoken and what the feedback is from those people?
You know, I'm not going to keep going through this. Any other public comments?
Yes. Yes, I have a public.
Don't raise your voice at me.
I'm going, I can do whatever I want. I'm a public citizen. I'm free of speech.
Public comments, don't.
I am not threatening you. My comment is, and my question is not done, you just blew me off. You made a statement that you have been in contact with these people.
Yes, I am.
You, we elect you to represent us. Do you remember that, what you said?
Well, the entire county elected us.
The entire county elected you.
That's right.
Now, now, I'll remind you of something. When I get into office, we have to turn this place around. We have to serve the people instead of having the people serve us. Do you remember that comment?
Absolutely.
I can play it for you. You please tell me, what you have spoken to these senators, representatives, the EPA, you made a comment right there. What?
The same thing I've said every meeting for the.
So you have no specifics?
Well, if you're going to keep interrupting me, I can't make the comment.
You blew me off ten seconds ago. Don't you have any specifics on that?
Mr. Stevens, your remarks, please.
There is the court case that just came out. I don't know if Mike's seen it. Argued starting June 6th on July 26th, that's Act 13. They demolished it. I don't know if you've read it. Petitioners motion for some releases accounts. One, two, and three is granted. They're null and void. You know what that was? That was a group of townships, not Susquehanna County, this is townships individually, that took on not only the PUC, they took on directly the DEP, Linda Kelly as the attorney, representative of the Attorney General. And guess what? In a month and a half, they got the Supreme Court of the state of Pennsylvania. I'll ask Mike a question. How quickly do Supreme Court cases usually turn around in the state of Pennsylvania? Not a month and a half, do they?
No.
No way in hell do they do that. You know why? Because they're taking this very serious. You know why? Unconstitutionally vague. They voided our right of home rule in our own communities, which even the Pennsylvania State Supreme Court found ridiculous and invalid. Four sections that are major section of this, there's the ruling at sixty-four pages in a month and a half. It took that, half that long just to write this probably. So here's my problem. You've got the small communities and individuals like me and Vera and other people that seem to care about the community a lot more than anybody else does. I'm not saying you don't. What he asked is a very valid question. We're not saying you're not doing anything, but we can't give you atta boys and atta girls if it's not public, if it's not put out in the paper. I've never seen a public statement by any of the three of you, never, about challenging anything going on, not one in the press. I'm in the media every single time I open my mouth because people seem to be interested for some reason. I don't care about being in the press. I just care that people come in and talk to me because I'm in it. That's all we're asking. We're not saying you're not doing anything. I never said that, that you're not doing anything. On this issue, I'm a Republican conservative that voted for every person I'm telling you about, Sandra Major, Jean Yaw, Tina Pickett, Tom Marino. I helped them get elected, including voting for you because of your positions. The problem I'm having is, if we agree ninety-eight percent on this issue that might be two percent is number one in my book, this is life or death, this is health and safety. I don't care what the rest of the issues are. I'm going to be a one-position voter when it comes up, and I don't care what they have next to their name. I'm voting for whoever stood up and went against this, this bad behavior because without it, we're all sunk. We all go down together, right? Ben Franklin said it, right here from Pennsylvania. We hang together or we will surely hang separately. We're all better hanging together on this because we're looking to you as leaders. You're like city fathers. We're looking to you as leaders. We expect public statements. We expect public action. If there's something going on right down the street, that's all we expect. We're not, I'm not admonishing anybody. I'm just asking, we're begging in public for help, and that's all we want.
I think if you recall back when we had the Act 13 meetings, my comment there was, I think the Act 13 legislation was some of the worst legislation I've ever seen come out of Harrisburg.
Correct, and it got passed.
And it got passed. And what did they do? They rigged the whole legislation to take the power away from the counties.
Correct.
Because even if the county decided to do something, the townships and municipalities had the right to do whatever they wanted to and override the county.
Correct.
So that's why it was structured that way, so that they had all the power.
Yep.
So now that the, so that's why the townships and municipalities had to step up to take that action because they're the ones that had the power to do it. They took all that power away from the counties by passing that legislation. They took all the zoning out. They took all that out. Again, like I said, worst legislation I've ever seen come out of Harrisburg.
Correct.
So now we agree.
There's a public statement on it, and Alan, that makes my.
I've said that before though, right?
But it makes me feel a lot better.
I said that at the Act 13 meeting. I said it in January. I said it in February.
From the dais, it sounds a lot better to all of us because you can tell we're all frustrated, the people that speak here. We're not frustrated at you. It's the whole system all the way up to Harrisburg and beyond. I'm pissed off at the president and the vice president for out promoting natural gas before they will come and see the problem, so we can't show the problem.
And where do you think it's going to happen, all that money that comes out of Act 13? Where do you think that money's going to go in five years?
Straight into the coffers of, for Pennsylvania, nothing to do with any of us except for the little bit that they're going to throw to us. Like the lottery, you're supposed to save the school and all that stuff. It's ridiculous. But I'm just telling you, this is bigger than any of us in this room, and the little townships, a few of them, a handful, went up against the big, bad state of Pennsylvania, and they kicked their butt, and I'm happy to see it. This is, this gives everybody hope that we can actually get bound together, a small group, and we can change the dialogue on this. So I appreciate your feedback on that because that makes us feel good. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Yes, I'd like to then say, you know, I appreciate your comment and your feelings about Act 13, but then can you encourage the people there, the municipalities, to tell them that something can be done? You can fight back. You can resist this act. You can go to court. Look at these people in the southern part of our state. They went to court and they got a decision within a month or so. So to encourage the people, to let them know, and even our attorney, Mr. Mike, if he can also encourage, please fight for these things. Resist. Don't just accept it.
Thank you. Any other comment? Both comments closed. I have a motion to adjourn.
Got one.
Second.
Motion by Christian Gengreco, sent by Christian Warren. Adjourn. All favor.
Aye.
Nine thirty-nine.
So there's a whole two-month, I don't know, dispute that Susan Oliver made with the court right now. It's something that, because I can't, Friday I go to the message. The jury's in front of you, that every meeting, but they got those levels. It's interesting too. They're very interesting.